Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to City V. Calloway Council Meeting Number Zero Six. We'll start with a moment of silence. Thank you. Can I get an adoption of the agenda, please? Counselor Awah, motions. Counselor Fawcett, seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Moving into minutes, City Council Meeting Number Zero Five, dated March twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-one. Can I get a mover and a second, please? Counselor Stevenson moves. Counselor Awah, seconds. Any comments, questions, concerns to that motion? Seeing none, can I get a vote in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Minutes B. Strategic Planning and Economic Development Committee of the Whole, Number Zero One, dated March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Can I get a mover and a second? Counselor Stevenson moves. Counselor Fawcett, seconds. Any comments, questions, concerns to that motion? Seeing none, vote in favor. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Is there any declaration of interest? Seeing no declaration of interest, going to move into counselor statements. Counselors, any statements? Counselor Flaherty, please.
Thank you, Mayor Bell. I would like to give notice of my intent to make a motion at the next council meeting to revisit Motion Twenty-One dash eight-seven relating to D.P. twenty dash zero-six-two.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Are there any other counselor statements? Seeing none, I will just take one fast moment to welcome Counselor Nattuck, who was away for a little while, to his first meeting at the new Council of Ch- Council Chambers. Welcome, Counselor Nattuck. Excellent. Thank you and welcome. So there is no other counselor statements. I will move into deferred business and table items. It did say no update, but I do have a pretty exciting minor update. On Friday, April second, two thousand and twenty-one, the Request for Proposal Period of the Mayor's Task Force on Affordable Housing had closed. The city's Evaluation Committee, Jeff Byrne, Stephanie Clark, and Rod Mugford, sorry, had met last week to review the RFP submission, and the task force is pleased to announce that we have found a successful proponent and will be meeting with them later this week for an initial discovery meeting once we have the contract items sorted. The winning proponent is Rural Development Network, and they are located out of Edmonton, Alberta. I'm not really good reading off paper, but here we are. Moving into bylaws, first reading bylaw I, Bylaw Number Nine-One-Four, Exemption of Property, sorry, Exemption from Property Taxation Amendment to Bylaw Number Eight-Five-Eight and Schedule A. Can I get a mover and a second? Counselor Shepherd moves. Counselor Awah, seconds. Any comments, questions? Nope. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Second reading of bylaws. One, Bylaw Number Nine-One-Four, Exemption from Property Taxation Amendment to Bylaw Number Eight-Five-Eight and Schedule A. Can I get a mover and a second? Counselor Fawcett moves. Counselor Shepherd, seconds. Any comments, questions, concerns to that motion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Third reading. We have a number of third readings. Bylaw Number Nine-One-Three, Appointment of Municipal Enforcement Officers Amendment of Bylaw Number Nine-Ten. Can I get a mover and a second? Counselor Shepherd moves. Counselor Flaherty, seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Two, Bylaw Number Nine Twelve, Land Disposal Lots Eight-Nine-One and Eight-Nine-Two, Plan Two-Six-Three-Seven. Can I get a mover and a second, please? Counselor Shepherd moves. Deputy Mayor Brewster, seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Three, Bylaw Number Nine-Zero-One, Amendment to General Plan, Bylaw Number Seven-O-Three. Can I get a mover and a second, please? Counselor Awah moves. Counselor Stevenson, seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Four, Bylaw Number Nine-Zero-Two, Amendment to the Zoning Bylaw Number Seven-O-Four. Can I get a mover? Deputy Mayor Brewster, second. Counselor Fawcett, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Five, Bylaw Number Nine-Zero-Three, Amendment to Zoning Bylaw Seven-Zero-Four. Can I get a mover and a second, please? Counselor Fawcett moves. Counselor Flaherty, seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. New Business, Municipal Enforcement Monthly Statistical Report, February first to twenty, February first to the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Rod Mugford, Municipal Enforcement Officer. It's here, good friend, to us. The floor is yours, sir, and, and, sorry, Chief Municipal Enforcement Officer. Thank you. I'm having a hard time pronouncing your name today, and I have no idea why.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening, Council. I'd like to start off to make notation of the violation tickets for the month. There is a total of seventy-two, of which there are zero written warnings and seven verbal warnings, and a total of seven vehicles that were towed and impounded to the city facility. There were nineteen violations issued in respect to speeding. Sixteen were for speeding seventeen to twenty-nine kilometers over the posted speed limit. Two for speeding thirty to forty kilometers over the posted speed limit. And there was actually one violation issued for speeding forty-one to forty-nine or fifty kilometers plus over the posted speed limit. There were seven violations issued for driving while holding or using handheld electronic devices. Two violations were issued for unauthorized parking. Ten violations for operation of a vehicle without financial liability. Eighteen violations for operation of a vehicle without valid and current registration. Two violations for operating without a proper class of a driver's license. One violation for consuming tobacco within nine meters of a workplace entrance or an exit. One violation for operating a vehicle without due care and attention. And seven violations were issued for fail-to-obey traffic control devices. There was one violation issued for driving a vehicle unreasonably slow to impede or block traffic. One violation for driving without consideration for persons or property. And a violation under the Taxi Bylaw Five-Nine-Zero for failure to display taxi driver's license. And one violation for failure to signal when required, as well as one violation for fail-to-wear a seatbelt. The subtotal for the month was sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, and we are currently at our, at a staffing level of seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Did you say seven?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselors, questions for Rod? Counselor Nattuck?
Thank you, Counselor Nattuck. Are there any other questions for Counselor Fawcett? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Bell. No questions, just a quick comment. I've noticed a lot of communication from city staff about dogs that have been found lately, more so on social media now than we've ever had. And we definitely did, as a council, ask for more effort in that particular area. So I'd like to thank bylaw and city staff for doing a good job helping take safe and honest handling of these dogs.
Thank you, Counselor Fawcett. Counselor Flaherty, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Bell, and thank you, Rod, for your presentation, as always. I'm pleased to see the level of staff in your unit. And just yesterday, I saw a bylaw pull over an ATV in the downtown core. Just want to remind community members, if people are listening with ATVs, that registration for ATVs is always the month of March. We're now April. So get your, make sure your stickers are current and make sure you have a license plate and follow the rules of the road.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Are there any other questions for Rod? Seeing none, I'll thank you, as always, Rod. We always appreciate this update. So do the public. I get lots of comments after, after our meetings, when you come. They're happy to see all the work that you guys are doing, so thank you. Moving along to New Business B. Request for Decision, Community Development Division Programs and Services Contribution, Two Thousand and Twenty-One, Two Thousand and Twenty-Two. Allison Drummond, Senior Director, Corporate Services, will present to us. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city received notification from the government of Nunavut, the levels of our annual funding. And I'm requesting that council approve the, our core funding for this year at three million four hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and also approve the application for three additional programs with a maximum value of three hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you, Allison. Do we have a mover? Counselor Shepherd moves. Counselor Awah, seconds. Comments, questions, concerns? Counselor Shepherd, and I will just make note that we have the system back on things, so anyone that has a question could just automatically put it up. I forgot to mention that at the very beginning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allison, can you highlight any difference in the core funding between this year and last year? Has anything increased, or are we receiving the exact same amount of core funding again?
I'm sorry. I can't answer that. I apologize.
Amy is going to say something in a second.
Okay, thank you. So the, I believe the operational grant is, is the same or very similar. The water and sewage subsidy program is the same. The community lands administrator fund is the same. The other programs that are listed, the three programs, those are more, those are application-based. So Allison and some of the other city staff worked with some of, to put together applications for some of those, and those are significantly higher. So the language fund is higher than we've received in most other years, and the community development fund is about eighty-five thousand more. And the municipal collaboration is, is one that I don't believe we've accessed before, and Allison has worked on putting together some proposal for that. And she's, she's listed some of the items that she's hoping to use that money for.
Thank you, Amy. Answer your question. Perfect. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Allison. Moving on to New Business C. Request for Decision, Solid Waste Management, Solid Waste Facility Upgrades. Request for E X P S C eight-three-two co-zero-two Northwest Granular Deposit and I R B Assessment Sampling. Amy Augers-Mars, Chief Administrative Officer, will present to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So today, we're seeking a decision from council to proceed with sampling that is required for the road to the Northwest Deposit. That road is going to service the new City V. Calloway landfill, so it's part of that project. The change is to have E X P, the engineering firm, provide engineering services that are, these are required by the Nunavut Impact Review Board. The, these assessments for this sampling is required for the project to proceed. And this is to assess the impacts of the proposed quarry operation that'll be adjacent to the, to the road. So E X P will be responsible for these sampling activities, and we'll be sampling for acid rock drainage and metal leaching. And this will, and, and they will be hiring a local contractor to proceed with this work, and E X P will be responsible for the overall work, testing, results, and interpretation. And we had two different scenarios provided by the, the firm. The first scenario is to get the work done this spring. And the second scenario, while much cheaper, is, or somewhat cheaper, is, wouldn't be done until late in September, which would delay the project for, could be a year. So we are recommending that, that the Scenario One, sampling before the construction of the road, at a cost of one hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty. We recommend that, that council proceed with that tonight.
Do we have a mover? Counselor Shepherd moves. Counselor Fawcett, seconds. Comments, questions, concerns for Amy? Counselor Fawcett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Bell. So my understanding of this, then, is that we are just, as council, approving something that is necessary for NURB to approve the process.
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Amy. Moving on to D. Request for Decision, Waste Water Treatment, W W T P. Upgrade Supply and Installation of New Emergency Generator. Amy Augers-Mars, our Chief Administrative Officer, on behalf of Engineering and Capital Planning, will present to us. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this request for decision is for the purchase of an emergency generator, the supply and installation. And I just wanted to note that this request for decision does follow an approval by council to design and the construction of Min Services through Nunamie StanTech. This motion, this motion was, took place in November, two thousand and twenty. So now we're at the next stage where we had the, the work done, and we're ready to proceed with the purchase and installation of the new generator. And so we, we are requesting approval for that, for that purchase. And I just would like to note that we did require that Kudlik, who is the general contractor, go through their own procurement process and obtain three quotes from qualified suppliers for that generator. And they did, they did complete that, that process to make sure that their bids were competitive. And this project is funded, majority of this project, seventy-five percent of this entire project, is funded under the, I'm going to call it, just a second, it's the Canada Clean Water and Waste Water Fund. So again, seventy-five percent of this project is funded through that federal program, and the remaining is from city sources or, or the block funding from the government of Nunavut. So given the value, we wanted to bring this to council, and we are recommending that, that we source the generator from Kudlik, the general contractor, in a separate contract and, and, let me see. Yes, as noted above, so we would like to proceed with the option number one, to procure this, this generator.
Thank you, Amy. Do we have a mover? Counselor Shepherd moves. Counselor Fawcett, second. Thank you. Come, there you go. Counselor Shepherd, your floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of cringed a little bit at an emergency generator, past experience. I won't go through the list of, of things that I'd like to have addressed that might not have been previously, but are we confident that the project management of this installation of a generator is going to be more streamlined than the one at the fire hall?
Yes, we are confident in the, the install and so on. And the reason that we're confident is because of the decision that was made earlier by the council to go ahead and, and complete a design and specifications for this particular generator. The generator is a very important component of, of the wastewater treatment plant, and, and we feel that, that this should proceed.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Amy. Moving on to Committee Reports. A Strategic Planning and Economic Development Committee of the Whole, Zero One, March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, reports. Counselor Fawcett, the Chair, Chair of that committee, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bell. As previously stated, it was meeting number one, March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, of the Strategic Planning and Economic Development Committee. The first motion was S P E D twenty-one dash zero-two, moved by Counselor Akumlik, seconded by Counselor Shepherd. Committee recommends to council to provide a letter of support to Sedna Link for the proposal for high Arctic subsea fiber optic network.
And you so move?
I so, yes.
Thank you. Second, there, Counselor Stevenson. All in favor? Or questions, I guess, first, sorry about that. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. The floor is yours again.
Next one up is S P E D twenty-one dash zero-three, moved by Counselor Shepherd, seconded by Mayor Bell. Committee recommends to council to direct administration to research and present options to council to incorporate Inuktitut signage requirements of the Inuit Language Protection Act into city business licensing requirements to meet the goals of the city's strategic plan. And I move.
Thank you, Counselor Shepherd, seconds. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. The floor is yours.
And the final one for this evening is S P E D twenty-one dash zero-four, moved by Counselor Shepherd, seconded by Counselor Awah. Committee recommends to council to direct staff to develop a small business promotional package, and I move.
Counselor Awah, seconds. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Fawcett. Good job. Moving into correspondence, is information only. I'm sure all of you have had an opportunity to read it. Can I get a motion to go in camera? Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Brewster moves. Counselor Stevenson, seconds. All in favor? Unanimous, and we will take a five-minute break. Perfect. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
We're back in session now. Having a hard time thinking here. Counselor Shepherd, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve change order number five relating to Dillon Consulting Limited's solid waste facility upgrades for an amount of eighty six thousand seven hundred and fifty two dollars.
I move to approve change order number five relating to Dillon Consulting Limited's solid waste facility upgrades for an amount of eighty six thousand seven hundred and fifty two dollars.
Seconded by, uh, sorry, well, by Deputy Mayor Brewster. Um, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if I could just clarify this motion very quickly, are we awarding one year or two years right off the bat?
Uh, we'll, um, let's award the two years with the option of the third year.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, I move to award RFP twenty twenty one zero zero five to ACOM Canada Limited for the West Forty landfill operations and maintenance support for twenty twenty one for one hundred and four thousand twenty dollars and twenty twenty two for ninety five thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
Thank you, seconded. Deputy Mayor Brewster, seconds. Uh, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you everybody. Motion to adjourn, Counselor Shepherd moves. Counselor Flaherty, seconds. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you everybody. Thank you staff, thank you interpreters. Uh, have a wonderful night.